Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of Thursday, March 9th, 2023, of the Tacoma Public School Board to order. Will everyone please rise and join me in the flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, unencouraged, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Tacoma Public Schools acknowledges that we are on the traditional ancestral and historical lands of the Puyallup Tribe of Indians. We honor with gratitude the land itself and the Puyallup Tribe. This acknowledgement serves as a first step in honoring our nearest tribal neighbors and partners who have inhabited this region since time immemorial and to whom we give thanks for allowing us passage to their lands. We shall intentionally create inclusive and respectful partnerships that honor indigenous cultures, histories, identities, and sociopolitical realities. General Counsel, would you please call the role?
Absolutely. President Bob Bright?
Here.
Vice President Schroeder?
Here.
Director Keaton?
Here.
Director McElroy?
Here.
Director Leon?
Here.
Liam McCormick?
And do we have any student reps here?
We do. I see Amanda Peterson?
Hi.
Okay. Thank you, Amanda. Great. All right. Moving on to item number five, do I have a motion for the agenda?
I move to adopt the agenda.
It's been moved and seconded. Any additions or questions about the agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes 5-0. Item number six, recognition of staff, students, and community. And I will turn this over to General Counsel Ben Row to talk about 6.1, state holidays and civic observances.
Yes, in the month of March, we have Cesar Chavez Day. In 2018, the governor signed HB 1939 into law, which declares that the 31st day of March will be recognized as Cesar Chavez Day across Washington State. Cesar Chavez Day is a legislatively recognized day, which is different than a state holiday, meaning that even though it falls on a school day, this year, March 31st, is a Friday, so students would have school on that day, which is common for most of our legislatively recognized days. On Cesar Chavez Day, Washington recognizes the right and the fight for safe workplaces, fair pay, good working conditions, and dignity for the people who help produce the food that we eat. That's the one that we have for the month of March.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, item number seven, superintendent's report.
Good evening, Madam President, Board of Directors. Tonight, we have a couple of updates. One is our annual monitoring report that will come in the next section, and we wanted to give you an overview of our grading policy work that has taken place. I believe Mr. Zeke Edman, Assistant Superintendent, is going to work his way up. And before he gets right there for us, I would like to just take a moment to recognize it is March. In the school world, this is one of our longest months. And we've been out in schools like we are every month, but just want to give a big shout out to the staffs. They are really doing an amazing job. I was in some PLCs, I guess it would have been yesterday. The deep work that staff is doing just to continue to try to find ways to support kids, to support each other, and to support our families and communities, it's complex, it's nuanced, but just so proud of their efforts to continue to strive to do better, to really examine how do we support students holistically, but also never lose sight of that we're trying to help them grow academically as well. And so numerous examples of staff reaching out to try to partner and do work. And so I just wanted to take a moment to say to all of our TPS staff, whether you're a crossing guard, or a bus driver, or working in our nutrition services, or custodial, classroom teachers, administrators, thank you. Thank you on behalf of all of us for your good work. Mr. Edman, are you ready?
I believe so. There we go. All right, so as you know, we are looking at re-updating our grading policy in Tacoma. And part of our process this year has not only been to get out in front of different stakeholders and hear from them, but even change how we communicate and share information to be as live and as transparent as possible. And so this has kind of been our housing site for staff internally. We also have one out on our public site through our curriculum and instruction department, where we started sharing that information as well. And we have some data that will go up there soon as our family survey is closed. And so we have been very transparent from the beginning that as we update this policy, it aligns to our mission and vision work here in Tacoma, and in particular around equitable practices. As we look at our kind of grading true north, we continue to ask these questions. And we've been out doing student listening sessions. We've been out with teachers, principals, instructional coaches. We've reached out with some community partners. And so each one of these drawers, as they kind of open, share everything from the overview of the project and timeline. We started with a small group in December. It was great. I actually used them as, I shouldn't use Guinea pigs, as a test group for like, what do we want to get in front of folks that's meaningful, that will help them engage and see the full picture? So they helped with some of those resources. And then we just started in January, and some of you have been able to attend the listening sessions with students. They've been dynamite. We did all the high schools, half the middle schools, and we just finished with our elementaries. And they're fantastic. And kids, of course, tell it how it is. And so as you open up some of the drawers as we go down, we see student voice. And we did a little bit in the spring, but in particular in the listening sessions here, you see many students talking about where they see consistencies in their class and where they see inconsistencies, and what would help them engage in learning and make sense, not just standards, but skills and concepts, and this idea of opportunities to either redo or retake. And I even appreciated, especially with some of our older students, they acknowledged this might be different in practice for them, as well as teachers and families. And so where do we need to communicate and make changes? And then we got into things like the stress or the anxiety that's caused by grading practices, and what does that look like on a daily, or as you get ready for big tests at the end of a semester? And how could we approach that different? And so you hear kids use words like chunking and bite size, and I don't know if it was because we were close to lunch, but we had them engaged around, they know they can make sense of this part, and they need time before they get the next part. So pacing of lessons and things like that. So we heard from lots of students across the board at different schools. And then we started this conversation with, and yes, there are a lot of students, pieces in here, with our family surveys. So we had 2,469 families respond. We know that many of these represent multiple students. And it was great to just get a take for how much does this grading inform your thinking in supporting your child at home around learning and education, and even planning forward or planning for additional supports? And then what does it look like as a communication tool? How are we effectively sharing? And so we heard from families as well, that in one class, I see scores on a percent scale, zero to 100. Another class, I see it on a four-point scale or BAME. And how do we get that to be more consistent? And I didn't post families' comments because we didn't communicate that in the survey, so I thought I would be fair, but we are analyzing that qualitative data to fit some of our themes and buckets, and so we'll have more to share with that. And then as our staff survey results, we have a lot of people using four-point scales and some standards-based practices already. So we plan to build on some of those pieces as we go forward. And then again, tons and tons of comments we heard from different adults throughout our district, which has been fantastic. And then the last part is, this is kind of wave. So we finished wave one, and what do we do when it comes into wave two? And so now we've got a package actual language for policy, and our plan is to get back out in front of stakeholders again, so they can digest what that looks like. So here's what we heard as some of the troubles, here's what we heard for the successes, we want to keep building on that and identify those trouble spots with specific language to make it equitable for kids. And so hopefully we'll come back, give you another update there of how that language is being received. And if it's on the right track, obviously that'll get written up for your review and we'll start building practices to go forward.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any questions? I know it's a little hard to see, but up there, so, because I can't, I don't have it on my screen, so. But it looks like policy 2420 will be coming back to us before the end of the school year, is that the plan, so that we have it ready for next year?
If you choose to move forward with any recommendations, you could always table the conversation, you could always say our current policy is what we like. So there are several different options if you choose, but we will be bringing you a recommendation likely based on the feedback that we have.
Okay. Is there any questions for Zeke?
I don't have any questions. I just appreciated being the two sessions that I attended. I appreciated the comments and the conver-- it was really more of a conversation with the students, and that was something that I felt was really accessible for students. And then I think there was, what they did also give feedback on is what was working well, which was good to hear in comparison to what isn't working well. So I felt like it was a really well-structured dialogue and opportunity for students to give, you know, fair and honest feedback. So I appreciated the process.
Anybody else? I think we all had the opportunity, I think everybody had an opportunity to be at one or two of those and found them very enticing on so many levels, and impressive of the students and the way they could, they spoke up for what they really felt, and as you said, no punches pulled. As a matter of fact, it was actually very refreshing. So, all right, thank you. Thank you, Zeke. Looking forward to the next step in the process. All right. Item number eight, staff report to the board, 8.1, annual monitoring report on early learning.
Tonight, we are led by our early learning director, Ms. Michelle Raw Lewis, who is giving you your annual monitoring report regarding early learning. Mr. Edman may also be joining her if needed for some technical pieces, but Michelle, it's all you.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having early learning here again this evening. Give you a little update on the report. Try to do our clicker the right way. As you know, early learning is our strategic goal number three, that we're focusing on early intervention and assessment for preschool through the third grade. Our early learning mission that we take very, much to heart, is that our mission is to support and serve our students in reaching their highest potential, developmental, social, and academically. We create and maintain developmentally appropriate learning environments, and we are empowering our families to be advocates for their children. So we have six early learning classrooms. We have ECAP, ELL, Deaf and Hard of Hearing, Head Start, Peer Inclusion, and Montessori. Those are just our early learning buckets for our funding sources. We are very proud to say--
Michelle, for the public, could you just explain what ELL is, so people that may not know?
Yes.
Anytime we use an acronym, we try and--
Sorry about that.
Don't know how acronym-focused.
Yes, our English Language Learner Classroom, that is at Sheridan Elementary.
And then DHH would be Deaf and Hard of Hearing.
Thank you. Going back to our enrollment, as you can see, that we are steadily increasing in enrollment. We're going back to some of our pre-pandemic. Very happy to see those numbers climbing up and the community and families being, feeling comfortable and confident to returning their littles back to school. So our key findings for this school year, again, that we are back to in-person as of September 2022. Our peer inclusion are currently enrolled to 97% of its capacity. All of our peer inclusion classrooms, the extended day, are now AM and PM classrooms, half-day sessions. Our state and federal programs, that would be our Head Start program and our ECAP programs, are meeting all of our grant requirements this year, back to the pre-pandemic standards. Again, our enrollment trends are going back up to post-pre-pandemic, I think overall in early learning, that we are about 98% full. And that is that continuous wave of some students leaving and more students coming in. We still do have a few students on waitlist for some programs that are wanting specific schools and classrooms. We do still see a need to provide additional preschool opportunities. You know, some of our preschool opportunities are income-based, and with our economy and our housing here in Pierce County and Tacoma, some of our programs like ECAP and Head Start have a very low threshold for being able to attend those classrooms. So looking at other opportunities for the broader public to be able to have a preschool opportunity. We are continuously improving our communication with our Tacoma families and guiding them through the application process, and really helping to explain to them that before we are enrolling in preschool, that we are applying for preschool, to see which programs that our community qualifies for. And then we finally have all of our data for preschool aligned with our K-12 system, and that data is in Performance Matter, so that we are able to follow our students from preschool all the way through their academic career and see their growth and achievements. Our next steps is that we are continuing to build our partnerships with building connections. We're offering back-to-in-person professional development opportunities for our preschool providers within the community, as well as our TPS preschool. We're still focused on STEM. We did have a training that was scheduled for February. Our enrollment on that was a little bit low, so we're bumping it out to March, hoping to be able to spread the word in the community that we have some opportunities. And that is it with a partnership with Green Trike and Graduate Tacoma. We are looking for, always looking for different funding opportunities to increase our preschool options. So we're continuing to look for different grants and different foundations that might be able to support our preschool. We're continuing to monitor our TS Gold data for trends and identifying different trends. This year, we're really looking at social and emotional trends and the impacts that COVID has had on our preschoolers entering into our preschool settings. We know that during the pandemic, there was not a lot of opportunity to play, and it's really getting our littles back into that engagement of large group environments and learning how to play again. You're going to be seeing me back in a couple of weeks to be applying for our Head Start continuation grant. That is coming up within the next month. We also have a couple of other grant opportunities for Head Start, which you'll be getting a Friday report on very shortly. And then our ECAP classrooms, that we have requested some conversion slots. What that means is we have, ECAP has some half-day programs, and we have an entitlement through our state legislation that says that all ECAP classrooms need to be a full-day classroom. But I believe they pushed it out to 2026 now, so we are starting a slow rollout of that and have applied to convert some of our half-day programs for ECAP into full-day programs. So we're waiting to see if that application has been approved. And then, of course, we're always continuing to strengthen our community partnerships with our early learning community and being able to have different opportunities for staff and students throughout our Tacoma area. And I think that is all for tonight. Do you have any questions for me?
Yes, Director McElroy, I see you pushing the button.
I don't have questions, but also I just want to thank you for the work you've been doing, especially with Head Start Policy Council, and bringing parents into that understanding of like, what is early learning? How does it impact them? And then they're also spreading the good word. I've heard they've been recruiting kids for us, which is awesome. So yeah, I just want to thank you for the work you've been doing and your whole team.
Thank you.
Director Leon?
You mentioned you're measuring a social-emotional learning component. What are you measuring specifically with what data, when you're measuring these kids' social-emotional?
So when we're looking at social and emotional, we're looking at students' ability to self-regulate, to make friends, to bond with a trusted adult in the classroom, and to be able to play in a positive manner. And that is measured through our Teaching Strategies Gold, which is the same assessment WA Kids for Washington State.
And that's what TS Gold stands for, correct?
Yes, yes, Teaching Strategies Gold.
Awesome, thanks. Which is also the program used to evaluate the childcare programs across the state as well, so it's very consistent.
Yes.
Madam President, if I may, I'd like to echo Director McElroy's comments. Michelle and her small, mighty team run a program that is larger than school districts. We are associated as a K-12 district, and so the leadership of the board and leadership of the staff and then community partners, it's multifaceted. Michelle has to navigate state programs that have different guidelines than federal guidelines, and that have different guidelines than local guidelines. And inside of that, there are categorical supports such as ELL and special education that have different ones. And so I just want to publicly acknowledge Michelle's leadership and her team for the amazing work. They consistently try to break down barriers for families to have access. I know that sometimes it can be frustrating as a family when you need these services and they are not necessarily there in your known neighborhood. And Michelle continues to do that work, as well as to try to work with community partners to make sure that we don't have gaps within the community. Our goal is never to be the sole early learning provider inside the community, but one of many options for families. And I'm very proud of the program, and none of that would have happened without Ms. Michelle Raw Lewis's leadership. So thank you for allowing me a little bit of time to acknowledge Michelle.
Have a nice evening, thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. All right. Item number nine, members of the public wishing to address the board. The board, state, school board members, we encourage public participation, and your civil input is appreciated. Board members will not respond to your comments during the meeting. The superintendent or a designee will follow up with you after the meeting if action is needed. Instead of meeting, speaking at the meeting, and you may also send email to board@tocoma.k12.wa.us. Please contact the board office in advance of the meeting for disability accommodations. So we have two options for presenting at a board meeting. The first option is verbal, and we'll get to that in a second. And the second option is written, and we do have two written comments tonight that are attached to the board agenda, so for those that are interested in reading them, we've all read them ahead, so that's part of the benefit of having them in writing. And so for the option one, which is the verbal comment, I'm going to turn it over to the, our general counsel, to explain the specifics on how we proceed forward.
Yes, thank you. We have six verbal comments this evening. Verbal comments proceed under Board Policy 1430, which governs the public comment period. Under Policy 1430, the board president may interrupt and/or terminate comments when the speaker exceeds the time allotted, which we'll have here at the desk, or when comments are either personally directed, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. Board Policy 1430 is summarized on the front and the back of the blue comment cards available at the lobby before the board meeting and on the website at tacomaschools.org. So six comments today. Our first is from Tiffany Reyes.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Tiffany Reyes, and I'm a resident of the Hilltop, along with my husband and two boys. I also serve as the president of Stanley Elementary PTA, and I'm on the board of the Hilltop Action Coalition. The reason for me being here today is to express my dissatisfaction with the proposed revitalization project of Stanley Playfield. As you may have heard, Tacoma Public School, Metro Parks, and the city of Tacoma are partnering on the Stanley Playfield project to uproot the existing open space to convert it to a ball field. This is very concerning for several reasons. The project is being dominated by ball fields that will not be available to the public outside of pre-scheduled programming timeframes. Stanley students utilize this space every day for recess, PE, and other after-school activities. And each spring, beautiful dandelions sprout in the Stanley Playfield, signaling to Hilltop that spring is coming. And let's not fail to mention the mountain view we currently get from the field. We reside in a portion of the country that prides itself on the natural and native components, yet this project proposes to remove trees and natural grass to replace it with artificial turf. The failure of TPS to engage in outreach properly and intentionally with the community regarding this project is disappointing. Our PTA reached out to TPS representatives over a year and a half ago and received no feedback or correspondence regarding the project. We need you all to be aware of the community in which you serve, a community that has been historically displaced and disregarded by the city. The current proposal communicates to Stanley students and Hilltop families that the needs of stadium community takes priority over the needs of Hilltop families. The project does not serve our community. Our kids need an open space to play and engage with each other, not fake, artificial turf protected by gates. I urge you as board officials to attempt to correct this wrong. Admit that TPS didn't fulfill its obligation for community outreach and feedback, and let's begin discussions to do the work, to reconsider the project, and go back to the drawing board to really engage the community on what our needs are. I'd like to leave you with one final quote from White House Council of Environmental Quality Chair Brenda Mallory when she visited Jenny Reed Elementary. We know the impact of climate crisis are felt most acutely by low communities, low-income communities, and communities of color. As a part of our efforts to reduce these impacts, we must take steps to create outdoor opportunities in nature-deprived communities. Increasing green space is just a way to equitably provide this to all. So I ask you to commit to going to the right direction, to convey to Hilltop that we matter. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Hunter Henderson.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Hunter Henderson. I'm a lifelong Hilltop resident and a graduate of Stanley Elementary School. I graduated from Stanley, and some of my fondest memories of that school was being able to go on the big field and watch bumblebees go lazily about the clovers, to be able to watch swallows do aerial acrobatics through the air, zipping around, to catch mosquitoes and flies and other things. I also played soccer on that field. Now in 2023, it's harder to see bees, and you don't see swallows around anymore. It's even more difficult when you know that other places are failing them too. These threats come mainly as a loss of habitat and foraging ground. In Canada, swallows are endangered, and I fear the United States might be next. When I first heard about the plans being made by TPS for Stanley, I was livid. I wondered where the public was involved. As a resident of the neighborhood, I heard nothing until I felt like it was too late. How does that fit in with Tacoma Resolution 406? How does that fit in with Tacoma Resolution 40622, a key component to involve community when you're dealing with planning? Moreover, a key design of the new construction was replacing grass with artificial turf. Where does artificial turf fit into the resolutions passed by Tacoma regarding sustainability and acknowledging the climate crisis? Artificial turf violates the following enacted resolutions, number 38945, 3824, and number 40509, and to be honest, probably a few more. This project particularly fails to achieve the ideas of sustainability, stewardship, and creating an ecologically resilient community for future generations. There is no net positive gain by replacing it with artificial turf, by replacing the grass or diminishing habitat for other species occupying the space. According to the Washington State Environmental Health Disparity Map, the area of the project surpasses the dangerous thresholds for many exposures, making the Hilltop a vulnerable population. And while artificial turf may drain, it does not stay cooler than grass. With that being said, it could contribute to the urban heat island effect amongst negative, other negative environmental impacts. And then there's the verified research and statistical data that shows injuries on artificial turf are worse than grass. I urge the Metro Park, or I urge Tacoma Public Schools to listen to the community that's being impacted by this decision. And I will also leave you with a quote by Otto Leopold. "A thing is right when it tends to preserve the integrity, stability, and beauty of the biotic community; it is wrong when it tends to do otherwise."
Our next comment is from Jennifer Lacy.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Lacy. I am a proud Hilltop resident and a Stanley Elementary School parent. I'm here to express my great concern for the current plans to build Stadium High School's baseball and softball fields on Stanley's Playfield. It is clear to me that the Hilltop community nor the Stanley kids were considered during the planning of this project. There was no community outreach or opportunity for community input until the first of March, and there has already been an application for conditional use permit as well as a plan to start construction this summer. The current plan will use the majority of the acre lot to cater to one specific group of people. That does not say equity, inclusion, or accessibility. What it does say to me is that nobody cared about an already underserved and overlooked community. We are going to be the ones that bear the brunt of the impact. We are going to have more people driving through our residential neighborhood. We're going to have high school students on the grounds directly off the back of an elementary school during elementary school hours. We're going to have more vehicles and people in a parking lot that already struggles to accommodate the current population. I would like to know what the traffic and environmental studies showed, when they were actually done, and what the environmental and traffic studies said about using Peck Field, Franklin, and Jefferson Parks to accommodate Stadium, and if those were not looked at as options, I want to know why. Who was advocating for Stanley children and the Hilltop community members in those boardrooms when these decisions were being made? Who asked how it would impact us? Who asked what the community wanted for this very communal space that we cherish? Who cared? I've always voted for levies and bonds when it comes to benefiting schools. This has me rethinking my approach. It feels like a bait and switch. It feels deceptive. We deserve to be heard, considered, and brought to the table. Thank you.
Our next comment is from Sarah Gariot.
Good evening, members of the board. Thank you for letting us have some time here this evening. My name is Sarah Gariot, and I come here this evening as a concerned auntie. My sister is seventeen years younger than I, years younger than I, and has children at Stanford Elementary School. And since hers are younger, I told her that I would come and advocate. I understand there was an issue last board meeting. I listened in on a Zoom and heard the parents come here regarding their principal, that they wanted to have a conversation with the principal at the table. I talked to my sister about this. She said absolutely the parents here want to have their principal back. And so far, I did hear the board member direct the superintendent to get in contact with them. I reached out to the Sun Alliance community from there, and they said that as of yet, they have not had any communication from anyone here in the school district regarding that issue. So I'm coming here to ask you again to do that. I just heard the early learning director, thank her for her comments and the great work she's doing, say that they're working to empower families to be advocates for their children. I support this wholeheartedly, that parents need to have more say in what's going on. We've heard that community members feel that they are not being heard. I did a public records request just recently on the FAWADA's General Assembly last September, and I noticed that there was a policy that passed saying that parents and families are important stakeholders in their children's education. The studies clearly show that when parents and families are involved and engaged, as we just heard needs to happen, it has a significant impact on student academic success and wellness. Schools should reduce barriers to parent and family participation to improve connections, collaboration, partnership, and transparency. However, I noticed that the Tacoma School District representative appears, and I'd like to know if this is the fact, showed that the enrollment for September 30th, we had representation in the Tacoma School District there on issues 1 through 55, but on October 1st, it appears there was no representation at all from the Tacoma School District at WADA. On this policy, there was no vote at all. And any of those policies that came up on October 1st, and I would like to know why this many thousands of students were not represented with our voice from our elected members at WADA on October 1st. And if you could please get back to me and let me know that that has taken place, that this principal and the community who asked last week, get that time with their principal at the table so they can get answers. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Amanda Ellis.
Hi, my name is Amanda Ellis. There was a shooting two doors down from my house last week. Please forgive my emotional state. The car being shot at had jumped the sidewalk and ran into the neighbor's fence. There, that is where it stayed for hours throughout the latter part of the day. My seven-year-old son and I were in the kitchen when we heard the numerous gunshots. He immediately ran to the back door to look out of the window, afraid it was in her neighbor's backyard. I managed to calm him, and I explained that he was safe since he was inside. I intentionally did not point out that I knew outside might be a different story. Reflecting on the situation, what baffles me the most now is how calm I was in the moment as if this was a normal occurrence. The fact is, hearing gunshots in our neighborhood is normal occurrence. According to On the Go Maps by Google, our home is 0.16 miles from the backside of the Helen B. Stafford Elementary School grounds. This school is a lighthouse in a neighborhood that is so often left behind and underrepresented. This is why transparent, strong, compassionate leadership is necessary to guide our children and the next generation. My son is a first grader here. Over this past year, we have seen a paradigm shift for the better, not only in our school but in our community that surrounds the school as well. Principal Alyssa Donahue has dedicated herself to providing our children a safe, nurturing, and stimulating learning environment. Her passion and commitment have made a lasting impact on the lives of countless students and families. The students adore her, the teachers trust her, and the parents stand by her. There are 451 students at Stafford, and she took the time to make notes and positive reinforcement to every single student's report cards. She sent weekly communications to parents that showed she cared, that the parents knew what was happening at the school and involving their children. She continuously expressed how much she truly loved and cared about everyone at Stafford. With this in mind, as I reread the email a month ago tomorrow indicating that she willingly resigned and in such a hastily manner with a replacement readily assigned just three days later at the school, myself, the teachers, and the parents, along with the community, are highly shocked, concerned, and honestly confused about the circumstances involving her resignation, as she would never leave without an extenuating circumstance of feeling unsupported by her superiors. Stafford families have started a petition, and we have over 330 signatures. So as I run out of time, I say, how can you make decisions that affect hundreds of families without our children and our community being spoke to first without feedback? How can we heal and advocate to advance equity in our community if we are not given the right to know what is happening in our community, at the community we see through the smoke? Thank you.
All right, our last comment this evening is from Krista Hall.
Okay, I'm going to try and not, I feel you so much in my soul, okay. Hi, guys, I was here two weeks ago. My name is Krista. I have a son that attends Stafford. You go ahead and put COVID in the mix. He was previously, he's been there almost five years, attending school closed. Last week, I, two weeks ago, I expressed concerns about the safety and us feeling as if we were just kind of ignored. I want to thank you guys. Since literally the day I was here, we have had security at both of the schools. I have a daughter that attends Fern Hill, so that's directly across 1.6 miles in the opposite direction of my house. So we appreciate that we felt heard. We also really were wanting to be more involved in the hiring of a principal. Like Amanda said, we can go ahead and just say goodbye to one. Well, where is it that we as parents and teachers who need to work well with a principal have a say? So thank you again. We have had a parent that has been called, and we have kind of feel as if you've heard us and that they have been brought to, brought to the table. Moving forward, when I was here a couple weeks ago, Julia came up and somebody else gathered my information and a couple other people. We have yet to have zero follow-up, so we definitely feel heard in the aspect of the safety and the being involved. But the main reason that we're here, we have not heard anything. None of the parents that spoke here have. Why is that? Why is that? So what we know is that we have emailed the district, and the district says, this is her personal information, we can't discuss it. It's very difficult to feel as if you guys aren't hiding behind that. So we would like to know, if she is willing to come have this conversation, why aren't you? Because the parents here and the teachers here that bust their butts for our babies want to know, and the flow of Stafford is amazing because of her presence, and we want it back. So where do we go from here? I mean, seriously, we're all here, we're the parents, we're the teachers, we're, you know, we have kids, and you guys are running the district. So where is it that we can go where we feel like we are able? Because we want her back. I mean, I have posted on Facebook, people are like, what happened in the past? Before this, I don't know, she was having lunch with principal lunches and bubble recesses and signing off 451 report cards and literally in the parking lot every single day. That shooting that we had in the parking lot, it was at 3:00. It was outside the parking lot, the casings were there. They shut down that school, we didn't hear anything. As a parent, they handled it exactly like they should, because my child's safety and all of yours and our teachers that are educating our kids were safe. And I believe that that is because of her leadership, and we want her leadership back, please. Thanks.
I'm not responding to her.
Yes, Enrique.
So it sounds like last meeting there was a discussion or a representative was going to reach out to this group of parents, and is that something that can still happen or is going to happen?
Yes, there's been several communications back and forth. There are certain things that we can and can't share legally, and so we will follow up again with everyone on the comment cards tonight. Director Leon?
And then on the Stanley issue, it sounds like there was a board member. I'd like to know, I guess, what the timeline of events was with participation of the community and decision-making around the fields. It sounds like there's two sides of stories, but it'd be good to know how that went.
I can give you the information and make sure that you have that, and then the next follow-up steps where the next community meeting is as well.
Okay, all right. Thank you, everyone, for coming. Appreciate your sharing. All right, item number 10, the consent calendar.
The consent agenda?
Consent agenda.
I moved it out to consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments, questions, or concerns about any items on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? We have, a consent agenda passes 5-0. Item number 11, policy matters. 11.1, First Reading of Revised Policy 1310, Policy Adoption manuals and Administrative Procedures. General Counsel Venro, what have you got for us today?
Yes, so we have the First Reading of Policy 1310 there for 11.1. Policy 1310 governs the way the school districts adopts new policies and makes changes to already existing policies. There are two changes you should be able to see in that red line. The first is adding a purpose statement. The second is an inclusion that came at the request of the Equity Policy Review Team to clarify the public's availability to comment on both policies that are under review by the board and also policies that have previously been passed by the board. So that's, that second paragraph red line indicates both that. There's a, there's a button on the website that speaks to policies under review, and so this clarifies that it doesn't, that the public can make a comment about any of the policies that you've passed at any time. And we'll make the change on, if you decide at the second reading to pass the changes to 1310, we'll also make the change on that feedback button on the website to make that clear.
So as it's the first reading, we don't have to make a motion, right?
That is correct.
That is correct.
And then if we have any feedback that we hear either today or later on, we'll make those changes between the first and the second reading, and then you'll see the second red line, which will have any changes that are made between now and then.
And the Equity Policy Review Committee team is, is meeting next Thursday to prepare this for the, and make their comments before the second reading.
Thank you.
All right. All right, thank you, General Counsel. Moving on to item 12, financial report. I see the district's chief financial officer walking up to the podium, so.
Good evening, thank you. Hi, how are you? I'm going to provide you with just a brief overview of what's going on in the financials. This is a pretty standard format that you see in the presentations that we provided on a quarterly basis, roughly quarterly basis. We'll be coming back with some budgeting information here in the next several weeks too, so you can look forward to that. But to give you a quick overview of where we're at financially, you'll see here on the graph on the right that there are a bunch of numbers there I'm going to run you through. On the 2223 budget, we had a fund balance planned for $55.5 million. Fund balance is our savings account. That was our initial expectation when we were going through, probably around this time of year last year. That's what we thought we might end up with in our budget. When we actually finished with our year-end, we were at $43.6 million. So that was actually $11.8 million off from what we had planned when we had built out the budget back a year ago. A lot of that was a timing issue. Some of it was our ESAR monies and the way that those were being claimed and submitted to us, and so we'll catch up with those dollars as we progress through this year, and then we'll see where we end this year. ESAR dollars have thrown quite a wrench in the way that we do our business, because they're one-time dollars, they come in only after we've claimed them, which means we have to spend them first, then we get to go out and ask for those resources to be sent back to us. $77 million is our current ESAR allocation that we're working through, and we're just about 60% spent on that, 65% spent on that. So that's the fund balance where we started. Our revenue is there, we budgeted $571.5 million roughly, we're coming in about $555 million. So that's about $16 million below 97% of our budget. And then again, there's capacity for our grants that plays into that. Our enrollment has dropped a little bit. We have a couple of program revenues that didn't come in what we thought they would in the budget, and so those are playing a little bit of an impact there. Now typically in the past, our trend would be without ESAR in it, our revenues would be about 99% of our budget. And so if we took ESAR out, we're pretty close to that. We're feeling pretty good about that number, and, and, you know, minor fluctuations that happen in any year are expected. And then when we get to our expenditures, we have $598.5 million that's budgeted, $566.5 roughly that we're planning to spend or projecting to spend at this point, and that puts us about $32 million under budget on expenditures. So we're, we're down in revenues, but we're down even further in our expenditures. And so those balances, did I say that right?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. I thought for a second maybe I said expenditures twice. Revenues are down, but expenditures are down more, so we're still saving a little bit of money in relationship to how much we're getting in. of money in relationship to how much we're getting in. And that puts us at about 95% of our budgeted expenditures. That gets us to our ending fund balance, which we had planned to get to $28.5 million. Now, remember that we had had a surplus the prior year. We wanted to make sure that we spent those dollars on the students that are in the system today. And so we plan to spend that money down to get to our 5% reserve or close to our 5% reserve requirement. And at this point in time, it looks like we will have achieved that plan if all things come to fruition that we have in the budget at this time. And so that'll leave us with just a little bit of a surplus over our 5% at $4 million that we didn't expect to have when we built out our budget. And our reserve requirement is 5% per the board policy. This is right now, we were projecting around 5.8%. And as a reminder, for those of you who aren't familiar with how we manage the fund balance or our savings account, like I said, the reserve requirement is set in policy by the board. That's the board's policy. It's not a state requirement at this time. And we use those dollars, or we keep those dollars in reserve for emergencies, unexpected crises, or things that come up like the pandemic, and to be able to pay salaries. And then, of course, for our bond ratings, it's essentially, those are like a credit report for us. And so when you have money in the bank, you have a little bit of a higher credit score. And that our internal expectation is that we will maintain between 5 and 8%. It also helps us with cash flow, which ebbs and flows through the year. We have a couple of months where we get very few resources in through our taxes or through the state. And then we have some months where we get a lot of resources in. And so we want to make sure that we have enough money in the bank in order to cover those costs while, while we wait for the next pot of money to pop in. I'll just stop there.
Does anyone have any questions for Roslin?
I have a request. For the public who doesn't understand ESER, can you explain? Just give a little overview of what that means, please.
Yeah. ESER is resources that were provided to us through the federal government for stimulus. And we received three waves of funding. We already spent wave one and two, and we're now on wave three of those resources. And so it's just extra stimulus dollars to help recover from the pandemic. There's a whole website out on the district's website. If you go to the finance page on the district's regular homepage, you'll find an ESER component there that gives you all kinds of details, all the different projects that we have, all the information about them, where we're at in our spending, and those sorts of items.
And just as a point to the public, that the ESER funds, they came in waves and they each had two years to, you know, appropriate and then spend. And we're on the last group now, and they have to be spent by 2024 at the very latest, so.
Yeah, September of 2024. And they have to be, they really need to be planned for at the end of this year, yeah.
So in future budgets, we won't have those ESER dollars, and that's why we're trying not to, that's why we're trying to manage all the fund balance and everything within the, within those and not count on those in the future.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. All right, so on to item 14, business matter, oh, sorry, 13, curriculum and instruction. There is nothing tonight. So 14 is business matters. 14.1 is approval of the Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment Number Two to the contract between Tacoma School District Number 10 and Skanska U.S. Building Incorporated for the Bryant Montessori K8 School Replacement Project.
The Chief Operating Officer recommends that the Board of Directors approve the Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment, which states the cost for the Bryant Montessori K8 School Project, and authorize the superintendent or designated to sign said amendment in the amount of $37,406,640, excluding sales tax.
I move to adopt item 14.1.
I second.
Got wild action going over here tonight.
We're ready.
All right.
Excited for Bryant.
Yeah, there you go. It's been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes 5-0. Item 14.2, approval of the Guaranteed Price, Maximum Price Amendment Number Three to the Contract Between Tacoma School District Number 10 and Abshire Construction for Phase Two of the Safety and Security Upgrades Bundle Project.
Yes, this is the continuation of our security upgrades across the district. We have a targeted completion date in the year of 2024.
Perfect.
The Chief Operating Officer recommends that the Board of Directors approve GMP Amendment Three, which states the Guaranteed Maximum Price for the purchase and installation completion of access controls, intrusion detection, and intercom upgrades, and authorize the superintendent or designated to sign said GMP Amendment Three in the amount of $17,490,843, excluding sales tax.
I move to adopt item 14.2.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions on this item? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Item passes 5 to nothing. Item 14.3, approval of the Guaranteed Maximum Price GMP Amendment Number Two to Contract Number TSD-22-075 between Tacoma School District Number 10 and ATS Automation for the HVAC Indoor Air Quality Upgrades Project.
Once again, this is a continuation of our HVAC upgrades. These are ESER funds, so we have a completion date in the year of 2024. The Chief Operating Officer recommends that the Board of Directors approve GMP Amendment Two, which states the Guaranteed Maximum Price for the scope of work at Blick, Silas, and Lincoln. The Chief Operating Officer also recommends the board authorize the superintendent or designated to sign said GMP Amendment Two in the amount of $5,260,180, excluding sales tax.
I move to adopt item 14.3.
Your mic's not on.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions on this item? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, passes 5-0. Item 14.4, approval to negotiate an award, design-build-alternative-delivery-method contract with BN Builders and TCF Architecture for Oakland High School's Historic Modernization Project.
The Chief Operating Officer recommends the Board of Directors approve the superintendent to negotiate an award, a contract to BN B Builders for the Design-Build Alternative Method for Oakland High School Historic Moderation Project.
I move to adopt item 14.4.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions on this item?
Questions?
You have a question?
Yes.
Director Leon.
Roughly, what's the enrollment of Oakland these days?
I'm not sure I have information.
140 kids. It varies throughout the year.
And is there ever been discussion around, so this is a remodel of the school?
Modernization, yes.
Modernization. I would describe it as as a new school.
As a new school. Is there any districts that do anything regarding schools in a school? Are Oakland being inside of another school, that type of thing, just to think about money savings, getting people involved, and being more inclusive in other schools? Does that happen? Is there room in any other schools in our district, in high schools, for 140 kids?
Well, I mean, there's numerous examples across the nation of schools within a school. There's opportunities and any opportunity to move and collaborate, put kids into different buildings in different capacities. In November, I think in November, forgive me, it might have been October of 2019, you folks voted on a resolution to build and charge the staff to modernize several different schools, to work with community partners such as Metro Parks and City of Tacoma, Boys and Girls Clubs, to build shared facilities, to enhancements across the board. So the staff has taken that charge that you formally voted on to authorize us to move in that direction. So in this specific case, we took that charge and worked to begin a process to design Oakland that matches the needs of the programming today. We did not explore putting kids, the Oakland students, our Oakland students, into another building. With that said, I want to be technical because we do have transition buildings, swing buildings, right? So they would move in that space. But that has not been an exploratory conversation about putting Oakland students into another high school in Tacoma during this time.
All right. All right, any others? Comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, it passes 5-0. Thank you, Chris. All right, other business, item 15, 15.1, ratification of the 2022 to 2026 Collective Bargaining Agreement between Tacoma School District Number 10 and the Membership of the Public School Employees of Tacoma School District Services Employees International Union 1948, Nutrition Services.
Okay, thank you. The Director of Labor Relations, on behalf of the Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, recommends that the Board of Directors ratify the collective bargaining agreements between Tacoma School District Number 10 and the Membership of the Public School Employees of Tacoma School District Service Employees International Union Local 1948, better known as Nutrition Services.
Do we have a motion?
I move to adopt item 15.1.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions?
This is great news. I'm proud of all the work that our Nutrition Services do across our district. I've been in many of those kitchens. I've eaten many of those snacks and lunches, and I want to thank all the work that you did to negotiate this contract for our worker, or for our employees and all the work that they do.
Thank you. Great team on both sides. Hard work by both, both parties. It was great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Hearing no other questions and comments, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? Any ayes? All right, it passes 5-0. Thank you for, for your hard work on this. All right, on to item 16, board comments and reports. Who wants to go? Amanda, do you want to go first?
Hi, good evening. My name is Amanda Peterson, and I represent Lincoln High School. So March will be a very busy month for our ASB. We are organizing a volleyball tournament, which is going to happen after school next Thursday and Friday. And this, we did this last year too, and it was really successful, so we're really excited to bring it back. We have our sneaker ball happening March 24th, and that's our dance that the juniors are going to be putting on. We're also preparing for Spirit Week, and our overall theme for this week, we're going to call it Spring It On because of how competitive our school is. So it's going to be, it's going to be directed around like class competitions and then school games and stuff like that. And we have our assembly coming up on the 31st, that, our pep assembly, and I've been organizing that as well. Okay, thank you.
Awesome. Thanks so much for coming tonight. All right, who wants to go first? Vice President Drosier, why don't you go first?
I have no report this evening.
Okay. Director Leon?
I was at a listening session at Lincoln recently, and it just went really well. We talked a lot about it. I just want to comment on the wonderful insights and, you know, just openness that those students had discussing the issues around testing. But it was, it went beyond that, so thank you.
Okay. Director Keating?
Sure. So I did the, I'm going to do the acronym. So the WASDA, WASBO, WASA, which is Chief Financial Officer Association. And I know I said that wrong, Roz. I'm so, I'm very sorry about that. WASDA, which is the School Board, State School Board Association, and the Association for Superintendents, had their conference on Sunday, the 20, February the 26th. So I attended that. And then the next day, on the 27th, we met with legislators together in our, so each within WASDA, we have what are called districts. So we are in essentially Pierce County, but in, we're delegated in districts. So some of us met with legislators that were not, maybe necessarily part of our school district, but as a collective for statewide advocacy for students. And so, and I also met our Government Affairs Liaison, Charlie Brown, and I met with several legislators as well. And our main focus with all of these meetings were around special education funding and also transportation funding and improving the funding formula for transportation and just helping inform our legislators and their staff on why these issues are important and how they impact our district and then districts across the state. So I did that. And I know there was lots of other WASDA-related meetings. And then on Tuesday, I did something pretty fun. Several of us, actually, got to tour the new Willie Stewart Academy location, which is really beautiful. And I had asked Renee, the principal, about like what she'd, if they're, like, what has she noticed within the students since being in this new building? And her comment back was that they are, attendance is increasing, their engagement has increased, and those that used to need to, she used an example of one student who needed to take like regular breaks, like every 15 minutes or so, and that within this new learning space, like that was no longer something that they needed, that they, there was a lot of sense of pride in the new space. And it was really, it was really special to see that. And then also later that day, and I'm sure President Baumbert will talk about this too, went to Foss High School. Their freshman students did their, through their biology class, did presentations. Their, I think they do this a couple times a year, maybe even three times a year. But they were doing presentations on basically a public service announcement on COVID and vaccines. And they were, there were community partners that came in and that were judges. And they were really, it was, it was a really, really cool, it was a cool presentation. The ways that the students, the, I got to see three, so you could go around and have the students see each of the students' presentations, as I made it through three of them. One of them, they, two students had created animation they used for their entire video, and one had never done animation before, the other had, and they were talking about their process. All, and then also they, one of the key components in all of these presentations was around the racial and social justice impacts and pieces around vaccinations and hesitancy for communities of color. And so they, there was, there was this really powerful equity piece to their information. And one of the ones that, the last one I got to see, they had created a board game, which was so cool. And all I wanted to do was play the game. So it was just really, I felt, I was really grateful that I had the opportunity to go and talk with students and see what they were doing. And it was, it was really cool. And I really commend the teachers there and the staff that supported this whole project. And I will definitely be back for the next one that they do in the spring sometime.
Thank you. Director Kelroy?
I didn't even go first this time. This is growth for me. So I'll start by, since our last meeting, I went to Head Start Policy Council, my favorite meeting that I go to every month, seeing parents engage in the process and learning about how this whole process works and watching them govern themselves. And I learn a lot from them when I'm in this space. And they bring up really interesting questions that I get to send your direction, Superintendent. And I just want to thank everybody for like their commitment to our students and our families and our parents, and taking that time to have these listening sessions with students. And I know next week coming up, there's a listening session with the PTX Stanley. I'll be there and to learn about what's going on there and what, really, let's get to the bottom of that together, and let's actually listen and have this collaborative space, which is a lot of fun. Then also, I did Read Across America Day, which is my favorite day of the year. As a preschool teacher, I read a lot of Dr. Seuss books on a regular basis. So the kids really thought they could trip me up by giving me Red Fish or Blue Fish. And I memorized that book, and I could say it all right now by heart, but that's a lot. So I went to Bernie Elementary School and Stanley. I had a really awesome experience in the Death and Heart of Hidden Class. They gave me my own special copy of Brown Bear, Brown Bear, so that I can learn how to sign it at home. Because you memorize a lot of stories in preschool, but you don't sign a lot of them. And then lastly, I was there at Read Across America Day. I met three, four of our daffodil princesses, and they're really amazing. And what they said they want from all of us and everybody listening is they want Tacoma's support. They want to feel like Tacoma is rallying behind them. They say in a lot of other cities, there's more engagement. And they said Tacoma used to be this really huge bastion of daffodil pride. So our daffodil parade is coming up, and the junior daffodil parade is coming back to Tacoma, so that's really exciting. And then General Venro, I have a question, since we're all here. If I am a private citizen and I quit a job, can you legally give out my personal information?
I can with your consent. I can without your consent.
So if I don't consent to that, you cannot give out my personal information?
Right.
Okay, that's my only question. Thank you.
Okay, well, thanks, everybody. Yeah, it's been a busy time these last, last few times we've had together since our last meeting. A couple of things I've done, I also did Read Across America, which was super fun. I also went to Bernie, where, by the way, the governor and the first lady were there, as well as Superintendent Reichdahl, who's the Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction elected for the state. And so a lot of attention came to Tacoma public schools that day. elected for the state, and so a lot of attention came to Tacoma Public Schools that day, and everybody got assigned to different rooms, superintendent was there, which we had just a lot of people, and, you know, going from room to room, and I had a fifth grade class and a K first deaf and hard, deaf and hard of hearing class, and I'll tell you, these kids across the board challenged me in ways that I was just shocked by. They were, they were very engaged, they asked great questions, and as a matter of fact, we hardly had time to read because they kept popping me with questions. It was awesome. I left there and went to McCarver Elementary, where I had a third grade class, and again, very impressive, great questions, really engaged kids, really well behaved and inquisitive, and everything you like to see in a classroom. So that was fabulous. I also went to the Lady Abe's Varsity Girls Basketball Quarterfinals at the Tacoma Dome versus Lake Washington High School, and it was a very tight, very exciting game, heart-pounding game, that we unfortunately lost at the very end, but it did put the Lady Abe's up into the, what did you call it, when the, when you're?
Placing rounds.
The what?
The placing rounds.
The placing rounds, thank you. And ultimately, they ended up sixth, which was really impressive. So, and I know later on this month, when all of the tournaments are done, we'll be celebrating all of the, you know, tournament winners, but I know that they played their heart out, and that was really fun to watch. I also went to the Foss High School ninth grader presentation, and I just want to say a shout out to the two teachers who coordinated that, Trevor Kaguchi and Atashi Langton. Those, they were just amazing. These kids were so responsive, and I actually was able to go to all of the presentations, which took like two and a half hours, but it was so great, and just individually saw each one and talked to each kid, and across the board, they really had learned so much and brought personal things to it, their own history, and the social justice component, which Director Keating was talking about, was really powerful, and the lessons that they learned and how they applied it to their own personal lives. So, you know, definite kudos to those great teachers, all of the great teachers at Foss that were working with those kids. In addition, this morning I had the WASDA, the Washington State School Directors Association, had a large district caucus, which is, we are one of many of the large districts in the state, and so we all meet everyone once, I guess, once a year, or maybe once a quarter, I'm not quite sure how often we do this. And we had a great conversation, it was against, against legislative issues, but mostly about the, you know, what we, what we really wanted to get out of the funding for special ed, and some of the complexities of those, and how that impacts all of our school districts. So that was interesting, really interesting. And, and then lastly, was it two Sundays ago? I guess a couple of weeks ago, I, and I know Vice President Stroger was also there with me, attended a very amazing rally on behalf of transgender youth in our community, created by our own Director Keating, and it was a spectacular event. It was one of those days, it was like cold and kind of icy rain, and then all of a sudden the sun, the sky cleared and the sun came out, and the entire time we were there, it was just sunny and nice, and people were joyous, and it was just a good way to support youth in our community, to be who they are. And so I want to thank Director Keating for all the hard work to pull that together and say what a joy it was. It was really well attended, and there were lots of electeds, and also just a lot of community partners, and lots of kids, lots of, lots of students who were there to, to make, to, you know, make their statements. So that was really a powerful event. And I think, so that's, I think that's it for me this, this week. So, yes, Director Leon.
Just a couple of things I forgot. The unified basketball team at Lincoln and Mount T are in the final parts of the playoffs also, so congratulate those schools if I get that, the schools right?
You have them correct. They both have won their state championships.
Wow, there we go. Congratulations. That's wonderful. And then the board and leadership knows about this, but I'm, I'll be gone at the next couple meetings, I'm doing some volunteer medical humanitarian work in Peru, so in case the public's trying to reach me, I appreciate the board helping me do that. Thank you.
Okay, so item number seventeen, announcement of next regular board meetings. We will be hosting, having a board retreat next week, and on Thursday, and then the twenty-third of March will be a business meeting, and then April thirteenth will be our next business meeting. And in between the March twenty-third and the April thirteenth, we have spring break. So, so that is the week of the third through the, the not, tenth through, the tenth through the, which, which week is it? It's the third.
Third through the seventh?
Thank you, third through the seventh. Wow, the months are just swinging by. Anyway, so that is our schedule for the next few weeks, and so then, and we're going to, the next item is adjourning, and then, oh.
We'll be moving over into.
I was going to say that after we adjourn, we are going to meet in an executive session. So if there's nothing else, no business else on the table, we are hereby adjourned.